Alright, there we go.
Okay, so meeting to order at 6:14. Sorry for the delays. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight and early. Alright, so we'll get started so we can have our meeting with Paul. Alright, so can we have?
Okay, we're in this. Don't get too far.
Yes. Oh, no. Thank you. And now minutes.
Oh, in favor, any questions, comments, corrections? And it's?
Oh, there it is. Okay. All the minutes have been through. So move on to the directors' report.
Um, another busy month. You can see all the statistics. At one point, we had four story time. We had twenty-three kids and then there was another time that we had a story time where there was twenty-six. I'm not seeing where I put that in here. But it has now, since now that school's in session, it's gotten more manageable, so it's working out better. Sorry. Hi.
Hi, I'm Jenna. Hi. Are you good as well?
Yes.
We just got started. I'm running a little bit. So you didn't get much.
Yeah, I have too.
You wouldn't, I don't want to sit here. Oh, you're okay.
We just, if your eyes are.
If you already see, we're not on our best behavior where I'm already having a direct form. We can practice and hand up. What's your last name, girl? You wanna push yourself? Um, come to the ground. I already checked and you said, oh, each one of them. Do what we do. Great. Um, I grew up. Um, thank you. It's about a year.
Sorry, I'm just throwing these all at you.
So. They're brighter. She's kind of her. Um, she's pretty. But no people know. But we live up there. Um, I did. Where the?
Oh. Okay. Cool.
And have you known Ari? Um, I know Ari for, it's really random. Um, my daughter went to Parker. And Ari's daughter went to Parker and I never, I did not know that I knew her. I would say hi there. And then, um, I would see her. And then one day she's like, I saw you over picking up the kids because the kids want to. Yeah. And I was like, wait, I've seen you for a while.
It's so hard to place her.
Bump into each other often and regularly. Can we just do a quick intro of ourselves too? Uh, yeah, Sarah Thompson. I have been on board about four years ago. Um, I'm the secretary.
I'm Richard Dotsey. I've been on the board a couple of years and I'm the treasurer.
I'm just not. And you're vice president.
We know each other. I'm Kim, director.
And then you're ready. I'm the president. You must be more than four years, because I think not there. So thank you for coming tonight. So we're early and unusual because we have a meeting later. We needed to schedule it. Well, we're just gonna do our regular agenda. Um, and then we're talking about a couple of things that are coming up, some events that are coming up. That's actually a bit more events. And can you jump in with any questions or? Or comments or solutions, you know? Who are you set up for the director?
Uh, yeah, lots of data. Um, just in terms of what's coming up tomorrow night, we're doing teen night tacos and trivia. If anyone wants to join us, that should be fun. We are doing a Halloween costume swap slash resale. So if anyone has costumes or you have know somebody, it can be adults, it can be kids. We're also doing some like, you know, autumn decoration stuff, so. Love to see that happen. Cherry yoga is going really well. Everybody loves cherry yoga so far, so we're doing that once a month. Yeah, we had eight, I think, last time. So, yeah.
What's the max?
She hasn't really told me a max. So, yeah, she said she shouldn't just keep going.
Has that gotten to the seniors?
I told them about it, but I don't know that anyone has actually come to it, so. But I'm gonna bring that back to them again and continue letting them know about it. We did have a great end of the summer reading party with twenty-eight kids and nineteen adults. And Jen's CPR classes are going great and there's a huge, like, it seems like a lot of people are interested in having more, so.
Yeah. Schedule maybe remember or something like that. Just try to keep it. I like the small classes. And it seemed to work well in the space, so.
Yeah.
So.
That's great. The community room was used a couple of times by different places. Uh, you can see circulation. It went down a little bit in some aspects and up in others, but nothing huge in terms of we're the same. We're really where we're supposed to be in terms of circulation as we were last year. And again, our numbers are going up. Um, I did do a comparison of pre-pandemic and post-pandemic numbers, just to see what that looked like. And we are still not yet back at pre-pandemic numbers. Pre-pandemic, we were looking, at one point, we had. Just like, pull it up really quick. Uh, this one. So like in 2019, our highest number was nine hundred and forty-six, whereas this year our highest number is eight hundred and forty-nine. So you can kind of see that we're not quite back to the larger numbers that we had. But we're still doing okay. And I think that, um, as we get back, actually, we are getting back a little bit more. So 2019 in January, five hundred and eighty-two, whereas 2024 is five hundred and fifty-two. I just didn't put it in the, this chart because it was really hard to read with all the. It had, well, it went down from the last census. So the last census, we were at twenty-nine oh three, I think, and now we're at twenty-seven something, so. That. Oh, yeah, that's, I didn't even think of that, but yeah. It was very strange writing in the zeros and then it was twenty-eights and. Oh, my goodness. Um, so that's where at the visits, I have been actively working on getting people with expired cards to come back to us. Um, I have actually gotten quite a few who have renewed since they got my letter. So I'm still doing that. Um, but we had an increase of two from last month of adults. Um, and we had an increase of ten kids this month. Some of that is because they wanted to be summer reading, but they also just really wanted library cards. So it was great. I was very excited about that. They're doing, they had fun.
Elaine was mentioning to me that Nancy Kevier is trying to be, it's bothering the school now. I'm trying to do something that would allow kids to get cards and connection to the library.
Yeah, we've been trying that for years, for years, but I would love to see it happen again. I'm gonna reach out to her again and see if we can't do something. Whether it be me going there, um, or giving cards out to the kids ahead of time so that they can get their parent's signature. Otherwise, I have to give them my card and my cards are not made for teens and tweens. They're really for littler guys. So I'm happy to, you know, give them cards, have mom and dad sign it, make sure that it all looks good and then bring it back and I'll, you know, give them a Steven Town card. So we can try and do that.
It sounded like Elaine was willing to help.
Yes.
You know, go to school or whatever.
Yeah, she's definitely was helping, happy to do that, so.
And when's Nancy's retirement party? I want to learn if she's not retiring.
She was supposed, she did technically.
Yeah.
I don't know.
You retire, immediately go back to work.
Yeah, Logan cannot understand it. You just retired, why are you subbing? Um, in terms of activities, we had summer reading. Our summer reading was actually, did pretty well in terms of completing. You can see the numbers. Um, I did have fifty-eight kids sign up for summer reading. That's because I brought all my materials to summer camp and kind of made them for sign up. But we did actually have at least two kids who signed up at summer camp, come back and finish the program. So I got two out of that. I was pretty happy. Um, but they read a total of nine hundred and ninety books and spent seven hundred and thirty-three minutes or hours. There's seven hundred and thirty-three point three-five hours, that should be hours.
Oh.
Reading altogether.
Because literally one percent. One percent, a lot like here.
It's too much.
It is, yeah. And if you know what they read.
Yeah.
They just don't log it. And then they're like, oh, I'm gonna. Okay, I'm not gonna spend six hours now logging everything to get you.
I'm trying to find a way to make it easier, especially doing it with school and trying to, say, you can use the same stuff you use for school, for the library or, um, and then there's also an app that I didn't want to do because I like the idea of not having them on a phone. But I think that's a lot easier to log their hours and their times on the app, the app. So I'm gonna look into that for next year. But maybe it'll make it easier for parents because I know it's, it's hard, especially, you know. Um, yeah, or if you have five kids, like some parents do, you know, all that stuff, so. Um, I attended a brand and marketing meeting, a DA meeting. There is gonna be a virtual and an in-person training, the Equity Challenge, on October fourth, which I'll go to because it's at Upper Hudson that day before the next DA meeting. Um, and it's gonna be talking, they're gonna talk about facilities and equipment, that kind of thing. Um, and then a draft Ulan fee chart was presented and according to this, it looks like our fee is gonna stay the same for next year. So that's actually really good, too. We met with PJ Roder about summer camp. Um, all the paperwork for me has been finalized for 2024. The library has now then technically discontinued our agreement with the town to run summer camp. And the town's gonna take it over. I will still be able to help out when, you know, if they have questions and stuff, but it's no longer on the library's. Schedule.
This happened all because of insurance. Well, it's something we, probably were trying to do, um, but our, our insurance, insurance company wouldn't, renew our policies. Uh, we almost lost the policy this year because of the summer.
So they say it is above and beyond the services of the library, so. So, I mean, the town pays for it, so they're gonna, it, it, hopefully it'll work out.
I hope the town. Our insurance will be renewed.
Yes.
I sent, uh, Jennifer Van Dusen sent me the copy to use for the letter and I sent that back to her yesterday. Um, PJ has to do the same, so we'll have to just. Have to change.
So we're, we should be good to go. We're gonna continue doing the Halloween and Easter parties because that is within our purview. Um, but the town is going to co-sponsor them, so I'll just submit vouchers and they said they will pay for it, part of it. Oh, and same thing for teen night too. Still get some money for teen night. Um, I met with the seniors group, um, and they are, were actually pretty receptive and want to figure out things that we can do together or things that I can do to help them. And we actually did have two people after the meeting come to the library to renew their library cards. So it was good. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm coming up with a list of things that we need to do and then I'm gonna go back to them and see if any of that stuff sounds good. Um, I'm thinking I might even just start off with doing like, how can you use your phone in the library at the same time? That kind of thing. So we'll, we'll keep on moving with that. Um, and I just signed up for the books from, by mail with Upper Hudson. I didn't put that in here, but, um, Upper Hudson has started books by mail, which is a free service for people who have vision or problem, vision disabilities. You can request books through the library and they will send them to you free of charge. Buy the mail, so you just come to your mailbox and you pick it up and bring it home. And then you send it back in the same bag and it's super, super easy and you can get free large print and audiobooks. So we'll see if anyone uses that, but if any, if you know of anybody, let them know that we can do that. We can help them sign up for that. And the big thing I did, I attended the Association for Rural and Small Libraries Annual Conference in Springfield and it was fantastic. Definitely worth the money and definitely worth the time. I was driving back and forth to Springfield every day. It was a tremendous amount of information and a tremendous amount of things to say like, okay, I think we're gonna do something like this. This should be good, so. I'll meet with you, Jen, and we can go over some of the things in terms of fundraising and the four-fourteen stuff and things like that. And, um, I also got some great ideas for new programs, so. Bigfoot will be coming to the Steven Town Library at some time soon, so it's gonna be a lot of fun. And then, uh. Yeah, he might just come. No. The Kinderhook Library actually did a great program on, they brought a Bigfoot expert in and they did a program there and she had the most people she's ever had in her library coming to this, this interview or this, this presentation. So it was. It was. It was. She said it was so much fun and it was actually a really interesting person who did the presentation as well. Nature conservatory, you know, she wants to, conservation, thank you. Um, and her, she wants to serve nature because if you don't, then you're gonna push people out. And you'll never be able to. It just sounded like something fun to bring and people love it. So she did something else with UFOs and something else with, I think it was ghost hunters. And it was great. She said, again, we've got so many people, so if we're gonna draw them in, let's. Yeah, no, no chemicals, no. It is definitely. It, it's a serious. Yeah, she even gave everybody buckets with plaster and they're talking about the foot mold on the ground in case you ever came across. Exactly. Um, so back to reality, we got a new printer finally. Our new copying machine is working well. All computers have been set up to it. We did have to bring Rodden back in to do it by phone. Poor man. And then, um, we now have the ability to print by our phones. It's possible. That's, that's great. It will be a huge help to patrons.
I enjoyed it so much.
It's really nice. Um, and then, so the pictures that are on the bottom are just our, um, our, our teens at teen night. They had a great time at teen night. A lot of fun, water balloons, water guns, that kind of thing. And then, it's just a couple of pictures from our, our smiley girl is the Stuart's Ice Cream Party, so. I think that's about it for right now. Try to make it quick.
So the comment is that Sadie has been great. So, uh, she's really been enthusiastic with the social media and stuff and right on everything.
Yes. I've been getting a lot of good feedback about her, so that's been great, honey. That's okay.
And Liz, Liz is a member. She's sitting in today. How are you?
Yeah, Sadie's been great. And she seems to be very happy and she's filling in as well when people are gonna go on vacation in the next couple of months, so. It's gonna, a good. Yep, she's able to do a couple of different things.
So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
Yeah, you've got the, uh, mostly the P and L. Um, we still have, uh, in the budget, we still got forty-five thousand dollars on the end of the year. Probably so, but remember that's still for.
Yes, yes.
And all the insurance comes up in December. I have fuel oil filler too. Yeah, once again, we're still have the, uh, the twenty thousand shown at that fund income restricted.
Um, yeah, if I tried to, even if I transferred it, it would still show up, so I'd have to put it somewhere.
Okay, okay.
So.
Alright. So basically, you know, we, now, okay, that's fine. Be a whole lot of interest that letting, you know, jumped out.
Do you want to talk about, uh, bank rates and stuff while?
Well, during the process, I finally, uh, I realized that I went to Broadview and I didn't have all the account numbers, they wouldn't talk to me. But Tim showed me how to go into the website and get all the account numbers off the statements. Because I could go there and they say, okay, fine, go onto the website. And of course, my computer has remembered the passwords, but if I don't, so, you know, I mean, so I hadn't gone, I'm planning on going to Broadview. I'm gonna be over here tomorrow. So I'm gonna go by then and, and once I print out all the account numbers and, you know, found out, you know, find out exactly what we can do about cobbling everybody together. And what the rates are gonna be, probably, probably about four percent now. After what the.
Rates and change affect things.
Oh, it will, it will, yeah, yeah. It'll change the CD rates. But not to, I mean, if you don't get four percent, that's still better than kicking ahead. But we're gonna be able to put, probably take, uh, fifty thousand out of the money market and then this, uh, you know, about what, thirty thousand out of special projects? Basically, is that what we thought? Because we're gonna, we're gonna keep the repairs in the painting, but the special projects.
How much out of the money market, sorry?
Uh, probably fifty thousand out of the money market. Cause we still need the forty-eight thousand for the rest of the year. We're not gonna need to use the special projects until we start construction a year from now or whenever that's gonna be.
No, it's not gonna be a year from now. We're hoping to do it soon.
If we get to grant.
And we'll find out next week, but probably.
Okay. Well, we'll find out what he says tonight. But I don't know how much, you know, we need to, I guess we could take all the, sorry, what? But that, that's not, the money is not to be applied to this.
The master plan, you mean?
The master plan, no.
Um, I mean, it doesn't matter. They don't care where, where you pull it from.
Okay.
So that's up to us.
Well, what I'll do is I'll go and find out what they, what they can do. And, you know, see what we can move into there. Scholarship.
Right, because I mean, we don't need much of that year. So as long as we have enough to pay the scholarship next year, we can move both that, right?
Okay.
And then, uh, and then the, the donation money is in the money market right now, right?
Yep. That's why it's up to me.
Um.
So that's, you know, what I, I will try and figure out exactly what all they're doing and see what they can come up with. Uh, and then before we do anything, I'll present it back to the board, maybe via email. And say, you know, if you want, this is what we propose. Yeah, what we propose. But, you know, if we could put one in for like a nine-month CD, that would probably be hopefully, you know, make at least four, four thousand dollars hopefully. My, my church's one has already made thirty-five hundred dollars in less than a year, so.
Uh, with the recent, um, issue of solar panels and then the increase in high electric bill, so do we think that we are gonna go over on our utility?
Um, we will probably go over. I don't think we budgeted. I just got another electric bill at two hundred, I think, so. I'll just have to sign into, surely we can see where we're at with the electric bill.
Another thing I was wondering is if we're going, I mean, we solved the one insurance problem, but I know that so many insurance policies are going up right now. Wondering if we're going to anticipate.
I got a bill from the Hartford just recently for another two hundred dollars, so I think that our policy is probably gonna go up to by two hundred, but it might, I don't know if it'll go up more or not.
First one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, my computer. I have too many tabs up. Hartford is no liability. It is workers comp and disability of the Hartford.
They might be so relieved throughout the camping business that maybe they'll be listening to it. Trust, trust me, any underwriter that's sitting there looking at that is like, oh my God.
Yeah, so for like. So for electricity, we're at, we budgeted nine hundred. Um, and we're already at eight sixty-three. And that's not including the amount that I just got for this last month's bill, so. We're gonna go over.
And we're probably going to be over, um, you know, repairs, but if we have to deal with the solar panels.
Yes. We will definitely go over if we have to do that.
Yeah, the repairs is the new door.
Um, we have that also, but you're talking about repairing solar.
Yeah.
The.
Spend seven thousand on it.
Yeah, I'm just, that's, that's not just the door. So the repairs are cleaning, copier, service, lawn care, safety, snow, facility repairs we've done is where I put the, um, the door in, which is not finished yet. So we've put five hundred and nine, the, the door itself costs five ninety-six, so we just have to pay for the labor now for that. So that'll be.
I think you said around sixteen hundred dollars together, including the door.
Yeah.
And I'm probably a little bit.
So in terms of facility repairs, we're almost over that, but we also have another set aside and we've only, we haven't, the landscaping. I'm not sure why the stuff, like, I wonder if I put, like, landscaping, we still have two thousand. Oh, and I put under lawn care. I gotta move that.
You want me to, uh, transfer something out of special projects into organizational second?
That would be a team, guys.
We've got four teams live in there for repairs.
Let's wait and see. I mean, I think, I think we reserve that for solar panel. It's so easy.
Okay.
Which it could definitely end up.
Yeah, I had a drive-by German in Troy today. Yeah, I had a drive-by, uh, German Troy today, um.
And I know who you're talking about, there's a place right there in North Spring Bush, High Peaks.
Have you tried?
Not yet, no. Yes.
But I'll get you.
Thank you.
They're great, um, they installed in the, they're still in warranty, so they came out to the house and fixed something that I had no idea was broken, because they're monitoring.
Okay.
So, I, I like them, it's just a guy, and then he doesn't need to call first. Or two.
Okay.
So the only way we knew there was an issue would be trying to get inside.
Well, I noticed on the electric bill, because you get the, uh, space where it says how much you generated, and there's big fat zeros in those. So, yeah. So, yeah, that's another thing I'm gonna be working on.
Anything else I'm finding or something such?
I don't think so.
Alright, friend and marketing, uh, just mostly about trivia, I mean, um, and I feel the press release together that I'd like to send out, um, more ideally with, um, there's a copy of it, so. Um, the, the good news is after, um, following up with boring twenties, many, many times of getting no response, they got back to me and said, oh, sorry for taking so long, get back to you, we're, we're good, we'd like to work with you.
Great.
So we can use their name and press release and then any other publicity that we, we do, so that's great. Um, we have to kind of work, work through what we're gonna make versus what we're gonna spend, but, um, they get back to the wine friends?
No.
They don't seem to be getting.
Can, can I interrupt just for a second? So I wonder, and I don't know the reality of this too, like, if we find out the price of the wine and is it something that we have to get from them?
Just that we know it was kind of good to have one stop up there. Okay, and they're just gonna pass on what they paid for the wine.
Okay, okay, I was just curious.
An apartment that we have to get to serve it, if you're supposed to be buying it from.
We just gotta find out.
Yeah, um, my guess is that it's gonna be probably like ten dollars a bottle and then fifteen or twenty-five, he says it's four glasses per bottle, what seems?
Maybe we should charge more.
I think we should too, but the problem is ten is too much, and so then, you know, change. But I sort of think.
I think so too, like, and all the, I mean, that's even.
Yeah, that will, it'll make a big difference in the.
Money.
The income, yeah.
I think so, we would just have to get like bigger. I mean, if you go to Envo, who needs wine, it's usually even more than seven, and beer is usually seven or eight.
Yeah, so. Yeah, this would be twelve ounces for the beer. I think the options are sixteen or twelve, and I don't wanna do sixteen. If we did. I'm always looking at the, I'm stuck, I'm so mercenary and all the conversation, I'm not really like that, but I think if you did eight, people might just give you ten.
True.
Or a seven, you might get your change.
Your one, I agree, and it is, and it is a front. It's gonna be more than that, it's like twelve, twelve dollars. They'll make a significant amount.
Oh, they're in Chatham, I know where they are.
And I'll continue while you're looking in my section. Well, these things are kind of easy, so Richard is gonna emcee, we, we, um, we heard that Cecilia's gonna do the pants of the trivia. What's happening, Mary Ann, it sounds like Mary Ann's husband and Iowa Barton. I'll, I'll do the wine and you guys will do the cider and the beer that.
Yeah.
Um, Scott Panners has agreed to do entertainment for us and also provide musical cues for trivia questions that are music related, and he's coming up with those questions for us, so that's great, and we're also gonna ask him, I don't know if he did already, if he did look up it. So I didn't include that, and he didn't answer that part specifically. So I will follow up. Okay, okay. Um, so we are hoping to have, um, a, a pitch for additional money. Real-time operating library is, we have somebody who would know about Scott, might be willing and good at it, so. Um, we still need to line up our raffle items, finalize crews for the pre and post-cleaning of the place, because we agreed uh, with four or five thousand, we would clean it up ahead and clean it afterwards. Um, decorations, to the extent we're doing any, um, appetizers and desserts, which we would kind of be responsible for, I know Mavericks or whomever we were gonna go with sandwiches, so we don't make those, and finalize our questions, um, so that's it for, for the trivia minute. Um, I don't know if people have answers on whether they want to find, uh, do cleaning or, or create, make appetizers and desserts.
Yes.
What's that?
Cheese straws?
Cheese straws.
Okay. Uh, yeah, maybe just like some.
And sausage. Yeah, sausage and whiskey and pecan. And cheese.
I can do.
They're really good.
Good taste.
They come in.
Me, show me. See, the dessert?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you could focus more on dessert.
I mean, I can make stuff too, just let me know, just so you know, we have ten minutes until. Oh, I thought you said seven.
What we propose, make sure this makes sense to you. So, the ticket pricing, individual tickets, forty dollars. If you buy a table of four, you can do what you want with it, you're buying a table of four, hundred and fifty. Table of six, two twenty-five. So you're getting a discount for.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any, was there anything else, Jen, where that's concerned, and I still need an answer on the press release if everybody's okay?
Good to me.
Yeah, we're here. Cool, okay. But, and how about the pricing of the that itself, good, like it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Totally cool, so I haven't been intelligent.
My only concern about the ticket pricing, it is, it seems like people won't necessarily know when they're signing up, if they have other people. Like, that, that would happen over time, they'd like talk to people, and so, but I guess then, then they just go in individually and then.
Well, I mean.
The only reason I, I was, sorry.
Well, my thought is if someone signs up as an individual, and then they go back to us, say, oh, by the way, I have three more people who do this, then you say, okay, fine, then you give me a hundred and ten dollars and we'll call it even, and then that worked out the money. You know, if they have three more people, you gotta pay forty bucks towards a table.
Right.
You know, or towards two twenty-five, so you could keep track of it that way. You take them off the individual list, add it to the table list, you know? I, I don't think that would be a huge issue, but I think you're gonna have a lot of people just come in and stay. That's what I, that's what I. That's tables. Yeah, there's teams, there's teams, people like to do teams.
Yeah, that's great, that I know who.
Well, most of them will, most of them will.
And then it's like, give it to me. Yeah, you just buy the team, it's like. And there are really other fundraisers, like Nancy Gallup and stuff.
And we have rooms of what, fifteen tables? Okay, I.
Great, thank you so much, that's great.
Sure, um, we're gonna need to do the same for the Christmas decoration resale in November and the accessory, accessory in February, um. You're having your photo taken today, yes?
And, and I am working on the bio, I'm not quite finished. Okay, good, that makes me feel.
That's not, that's not what the bar is.
I just talked to him tonight, he's gonna look at it tomorrow.
Uh, we're gonna need to put together a press release and flyers for the holiday market, it's coming up December twenty-nine. Um, Cheryl has agreed to be profiled in the annual field letter, and I don't know if we have yet settled the date. Was, that didn't happen? It was a funny exchange between Deborah and Cheryl. Deborah very much wanted the. I felt like I could just feel, I could just feel Deborah's reaction from the others now that they're coming to you. I told that stuff, we wanted them hopefully to tell the friends and mail me. Yeah, that's. Um, and that's it for our next marketing meeting is October.
Send flyer for envelope this year. From like sixty-five to seventy-five.
Uh, I did talk to, um, the town about using their so, but they, it's, it's no benefit, it's just a, it's just a bulk mailing, not, nonprofits. So, um, anyway, I gotta look at the quote, get the names and stuff, all of that. Um, on the holiday, what it says. I, I just wanted before I commit, did, did you, Kim, did you talk to Deborah about, um, still interviewing, knowing?
She thinks that that's a great idea for the kids, uh, the kids room stuff, so, um, I can, I just have to talk to them about it and make sure they're still good with it.
Okay, so I've got.
When do you wanna do that letter, would it be in the new year?
Deborah wanted to do the interview, and now we just kinda keep it on.
Once she's finished with Cheryl's, I'll.
Yeah.
Approach the next one.
I would think we do a letter one, we know that they're. Prior to, yeah.
Basically outlawed. The issue.
So you invite in, um, emotional support animals, that's that's good, uh, the fact that you have emotional support animals on here is good. Because that's, that's another thing now.
So would Crosby be considered part of a library?
So I forgot, was, has, has this been an issue, or is this something we're just putting in place, just?
It was an issue a long time ago, and we had a very small policy that just said no pets are allowed.
Okay.
But we've never had an actual service animal policy, so Scott has.
Okay.
Put the whole thing together. Oh, we've had, you know, we've had service animals, definitely had service animals, yeah, yeah. And the emotional support thing too, yeah, so, you know, I kind of play that one by ear, if it, if it's, there's nobody in the library and it's not gonna bother anyone, then you know, if they're only here for a few minutes, that's not a big deal, but, yeah. It's better to have the policy in place.
Yeah.
The federal government deals with service animals, dogs and miniature horses. Just so you know.
Interesting.
But, but, actually, monkeys have been used to service. Yes, actually, they're really.
I think it's good to have a part about the leash in here too, both for, you know, all.
I think this is actually a workable policy. It's sort of.
And that's helpful, because I've sort of gotten in crush sometimes, oh, you can't ask anything, but that's, you can't.
You can ask much.
You know.
Are you disabled, what is this creature?
The ones that actually have it for a purpose. Without. And I know, I know many times people with service animals are very concerned with the, with making sure that it's um, positive thing, so you don't have a negative experience of them.
So is this ready to be adopted?
So can we get, I, um, make a motion, Scott, to adopt this policy?
The pets and service animal in the library helps.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll let you know. Can I, can I, uh, can you send me the forward document of this, so I don't have to type it over again?
So, one, one question, we have two eight, but just a thought.
It's never too late.
Say anything about, like, is this about in the library itself versus when the library is open versus if somebody is um, using the community room or using.
I would say a good policy of in the library, when people are in this building, this is the policy. Simple as that, has to be on a leash.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Most people, as you've said, if they're, you know, truly need a service animal, they're much more reasonable. Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Get it certified.
A lot, a lot of money involved.
Ari, Toby and I are gonna transport the kids from the transportation, I'm pretty sure, Ari said yes, before we had the operative, and so so we'll be back with the yes. Um, Ari, Toby and I are gonna transport the kids from the transportation. I'm pretty sure Ari said yes before we had the operative event. So we'll be back with yes.
I have a van available.
Okay, cool. The flowers look really nice, by the way.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Yeah. Blake removed the unsightly urns from the front of the shed. It looks like he did anywhere. I haven't seen them there anymore.
I don't remember. I haven't looked.
Okay. So we got some mums and cook them out and I ordered them a couple of pieces. They're not really fancy. But it does look kind of nice. I think it, I mean, I think it draws a little bit more attention to those dimensions. Yeah, I forgot to look.
Right. I'm gonna have Sadie do a post about it, just so.
Okay. Uh, Bob Nichols, we raised this thought, but he's coming next week. I don't have him today yet, but as soon as he helps me there, let me know. This would probably be helpful for you to be here in Dublin. Which windows are problematic?
Sure.
Exactly where we want to be.
Okay.
And then the solar panel area is about. And the small youth committee for Ari and Ari. So I think the, uh, camp, uh, Halloween party. Two, four, thirty-four volunteers in time who beverage those and such. Yeah, okay. And I think some people volunteer around. Okay.
We'll probably do um, similar to what we did last year, although we might change things up because last year there was a lot of confusion with the trunk or treating and people could go trunk or treating and they got upset because it was, they had to come inside first. They just wanted to do the truck treat and so. I'm gonna, we'll, we'll have to talk about it and figure out how we want to do that because maybe we'll just do it. The opposite way next time, but. Um, we'll see.
Um, like last year, the fire department's in the evening.
Oh.
Uh, in the hall, but so it's not like, like last time there are people looking to help clean up them.
Oh, okay.
There might be five o'clock people around.
So they do a trunk or treat at the same time you do the Halloween party?
Yeah, normally we, we do an hour in the, of a party and costume contest in the building and then release everybody to go to the trunk or treating at three. We tried to, we wanted everyone to show up and do the party itself, not just do the, the trunk or treating. So we tried to make, so you couldn't go trunk or treating until three o'clock, which didn't make some people happy. So. There was, yeah. So I don't know. We have to think about how we can maybe change things a little bit, maybe even doing things outside or, you know, just so that it's a big go around and I, I don't know.
Those parties from two to four, trunk or treat starts at three.
Yeah.
You know, and just be really specific. And that way people that only learned the, the trunk or treat part.
That was what we, we kind of wanted to make sure people still did the other stuff as well. So we didn't go to all of this trouble to do a party and then have someone come to it. So, I mean, if we have to.
And be kind to people.
We tried to put caution tape up it, but.
Their gums are candy.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, what's an idea for the holiday party? So Vicky has been the one who led our efforts on the floats. Things the last couple years. And so what I thought might be nice if, if they're willing, is asking if Karen, both being Jim and Paul. Go well, do, would want to help do, help us do this, take the lead on it. Um, I don't know if they'll be game for that or not, but it might be a nice way to remember Vicky. So I didn't know if people had thoughts on that or, um, I mean, I'd love. Paul, you know, used his truck.
Yeah, it was his trailer and.
I, I think it's a great idea. As long as we ask in such a way that if they don't want to. And I think they found a good one. Yeah. And I don't know if there's any sort of theme that we can, of that sort of. That related to Vicky. She did a magical like Lego club, like do like Lego.
That would be. That would be fun.
Like we could make, I mean, we. Use that term mostly, um, not exclusively, uh, make like cardboard like those or something, right?
Yes, we, it would be easy, it would be easy to make something like that. Lego theme float.
And that is, um, this year. So the other thing is just to keep in mind, I mean, this time of year it always gets to be. A lot. Um, so we've got the fundraiser on November sixteenth. So we're all going to be very busy with that. Then we have the twenty ninth will be the holiday market and then. Yeah. So. Committing ourselves to quite a bit in November. So thank you in advance for that. And that's also right in the middle of trying to get the annual, get it out. So, um.
Uh, just so you all know too, the veterans annual meeting that they have here is on the sixth of November. They usually come in between six and seven. I'm not sure which time I'm having is ready at six.
And I think last year we talked about maybe trying to up our game a little on that. I think that's just do like pizza.
Yeah.
Something nicer. Um, do we want to talk about that? See if we want to?
Well, we have, we can kind of come up with some ideas we have next month to, to figure that out.
So every year the veterans have their member meeting here in the libraries. It's from the memorial advisory. And, um. So I think, I think the way it evolved was for a while they were doing a luncheon afterward. Me as the board volunteered to help, um, serve and serve food and everything, make food. And then I guess during COVID it sort of stopped, they stopped doing that part of it, but they still do the meeting here. So we would provide some refreshment, but, um.
It's usually just pizza and donuts or, you know.
We tried vegetables, but no one touched them.
What's the date for that?
That's November sixth, the first Wednesday of November.
Okay.
They, they kept telling me that they're very, very happy with just pizza and just, you know, donuts, but, you know, we wanted to get, they, they, they liked it all. Vegetables. So, I mean, we can, we can either try. I just, oh, yeah. Well, last year it was because they didn't. Oh, it was like they were showing up and I'm like, what are you guys doing here? I think it's time for the meeting. We were, it, oh, it's bad. Um, it, around fifteen. See how nervous that may be?
Uh, holiday market. So, um. I want to ask about, uh, the big details. So last year we got a little feedback, a couple of people asking that they're hoping that it could be later. So either run longer or perhaps an hour would be a little later. Um, so I asked them to do a poll, but now I can't find it. I'm on our page. And I can't find it. But, um, I'm gonna look again. But the last time I checked earlier in the week, um, it's the little bit later time, which I think was twelve before. Um, was winning. Um, but we also had a split between one of our vendors prefer the early time, one of our vendors, and then specifically after. So I don't know what people think about the timing at twelve before seems, um, it gives us a little more time to set up as well because one of the other bits of feedback that people felt like it could look a little more festive in here. So we could do a little bit more of that in the morning.
I think twelve before is a good idea. And around four o'clock, it's starting to get dark. So it feels like it's the end of the day and you don't feel like you still have more time to do stuff. So.
Saturday afternoon is two to six. You're past garage sale. I see so many garage sales are like morning or.
What's that? Eleven to three. I know it's not an option, but that's good. But it answers some of the people that want the morning time and then it has till the afternoon, but it allows people to get home and run some errands before things do get dark. You know what I mean? That eleven to three, it kind of covers both ends because people have things in their life. They do.
Yeah, eleven to three sounds good to me too, or either one.
Wake him up.
If we're in town, I would love to do the, like, decorating or something like that with kids again, just to try and pull some people in as well. I mean, I know we'll probably have a bake sale, but the cookie decorating was, that went over really well the last year before last.
Yep. Um, and do we want to look at the vendor feed? Wait, did we make a decision about?
Wait, so.
I'm, I'm open to whichever. I think either, I think eleven to three or twelve to four is okay. Well, it seems like eleven to three might cut the difference.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
So.
And then. And then are you? Is that what it has been? It could be what people are.
It's, it's a, it's not a hard ask to do twenty bucks because if you don't make a lot of money, you're not losing too much.
Donation. Yeah, if you don't make a lot.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So I'm, I think twenty dollars is a good. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I can give them receipts. Yeah. Twenty bucks is, I mean, it's not a huge amount, but it's a good or something. So.
Do you have a lot of vendors? I haven't approached any of them. So I just mailed down the video and then, but I'll send out the email. So I think we have a lot of people who will be repeats, but, um, I also like trying to see if I have a couple of people at the, um. The car show. That might be a good campaign. I'm not so much into recruiting the people who are the like, um. Not Ivan, but whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
But there was a guy who did stained glass. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Um, so, and there was a soap person there and I don't think we have soap person. So I'll see if I can get those.
Great.
And do you have anything else you thought? Else was there before? It would have to be known. I like, I think it's good if we can try to keep it more artisan-y.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry. Redola? Redola?
Yeah, I got his car. I mean, it was something I really liked.
I think I took his car too, but I haven't seen it. I haven't seen it since. So I'm. Okay. Cool. Anything else on holiday market? Any other ideas? Having kids come and make their own.
We've done that.
Instead of like, instead of, oh, maybe I didn't. But like, just something, because I remember that because of like a lot of things. Interactive. They, they were happy talking about their kids, pictures of their kids, selling things they made. But it's more connective.
Right.
And they also. While the kids are like making something.
No, we can, we've done that in the past and it's definitely been a good thing. So we would, I think last year we wanted to try and see if it was, try not to put so much on our plates about it with it all, but I'm happy to do a kid's program a lot. If I'm here, now that I'm thinking about it, I should be here. Don't know if I will definitely be here or not. Yeah, but maybe Sadie would do it or, because she would. That's what I do. I do that one every, yeah. So I also do an ornament program every year where we do diff, we usually have three different types of ornaments that they can make and that's. I don't know what I'm going to do this year, but the one they like the best is when you have the bulb and then you pour the paint in and you swirl paint around and then that's, that's always the, the draw. So. But yeah, no, that's what I was going to say, like the cookie decorating or we might do something else that kids can have on with. Yeah. Yeah. The other thing that was fun that Jody did a couple of years ago was doing a kid's table of where they could, but kids could buy stuff for like a quarter. Yeah. We set Jody up and, oh, you know what? We set Jody up in the kids, in the kids cave to turn that and it went pretty well. So I can ask her, can she be interested in running that?
Thank you, thank you. Talked about solar panels already. Kim, any further thoughts on the bookkeeping?
Yeah, I need to talk, I'd like to just meet with you on.
Okay.
So.
You are the public. The elementary school is so far away. The kids, my kids go to a little car. So it's kind of nice to have them go to camp here because they get a different, makes some kids, but like the, the fact that Brooklyn's so far, it's hard to connect. They have like the Steven Town or the San Lake Library right across the street from school. So they take. Off the bus here and do that. And so like, there's that automatic, you know. At the health school, they come across the street because they're like, yeah, you know, they'll ask me, but they, they like, oh, they, they'll say. So it's, it's nice. It's from the community too. Is there anything that you find that San Lake does that is particularly learning or, I mean, given the differences of. Or the books that the kids like in their own little room. There's a computer that's put for the kids to play and I don't necessarily ever let mine, but there are some physical in. They do have a shelf. One thing I do like is they have a shelf right now. It's dedicated to early readers. So it's like the, the beginning.
Yeah, we have, we have that. It's underneath the.
But it's a big, like.
It's a big shelf.
Shelf. And we're like.
She can figure it out.
Because it's like, it's clear. And so, yeah, that's the, that's the big thing. It's just the selection sometimes is better.
Right.
There and it, that's just town to town. Like there's nothing, you know, there's nothing different. And whereas I think adults, it's easier to take advantage of the, um, it's like a remote aspect of things. And so you can do that. I think kids are more of the frowzy thing. So having that.
Well, hopefully we'll be able to remedy that with the new space. So, but you know, we'll have more space to put things in and.
You know. My daughter will ask to go to yoga. So, so ask to come and participate. And it's hard to decide where I'm there. Right? On that side of the ranch or.
Yeah, which.
Which side of my arm?
Yeah.
You know, um, and since they go to school, it tends to be I'm on that side of the world. Yeah. Comfy, cozy feeling, or is there a little bit more businesslike, you know, this feel?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we can accuse you to businesslike.
No, I agree. I, um.
No, I agree, I, um, I have to tutor students in person, I usually do that that way. Okay, just because it's there, it's close, just one more home for me. And they're also, they're having, they should be selling this. Did you see it happens? Ten to two, I think.
Yeah, but they get a lot.
Well, we can't, but we used to, but we just can't do that, it takes up too much time, too much, too much time and space. And the amount of money is not worth it, but. We're not like Pittsfield, so.
No, they will not take library books, unless they're large print, they will take large print library books.
I don't usually get rid of our large print.
They will also take nonfiction.
I haven't waited the nonfiction.
Yeah, they will not take fiction.
We are seven twenty-four, so I'm gonna ask you to, and call the meeting to adjourn. Um, that way people can do the rush, and they'll start seven thirty, but, but we can still chat ten minutes while we're, we're doing that, yeah. Um, so, um, motion to adjourn. Okay, almost one second. My, uh, favor, all right, we are adjourned, we stopped the recording.